We're going to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Hi, Deanne. Do you have a good news report for us this evening?
I do, indeed.
Well, thank you. We're looking forward to hearing the good news report.
Well, as you all know, Thanksgiving fell late in November this calendar year, and I think that's making all of us feel a little bit of a mad scramble to get things done before winter break. Our schools and our departments are certainly feeling that as well. So I wanted to provide you with just a glimpse of some of the activities going on just this week, and also help our public know how they can access some of these wonderful things happening in our schools. So if our public is ever wondering about how to find out when they see the lights are on in the building, what actually is going on in there, I want to draw your attention to our website, which is sf.k12.st.us. Across the top, there's a black bar here, and the third line over says, or the third tab over says, District Calendar Bound. Bound is the program that we use to run our calendaring system. Here is the month of December, and as you know, today is the eighth. Looking at this week, here is just a small rundown of what we have going on this week. And if you look at December 9th, tomorrow, there are actually 67 entries on the calendar for things happening tomorrow alone. Concert season, as you know, is upon us, so you will find everything from those cute kindergarten holiday concerts to the more advanced band choir and orchestra experiences that are going on at our schools. In fact, this week alone, our community relations team will be recording nine concerts. Take some time to do some post-production on those concerts, but once they are done, you can search for K-Learn TV on the district cable access, or I'm sorry, on the district website. And this is our K-Learn schedule. So you can see the concerts that are going to be played. You can also go and find on-demand concerts that we previously have finished in post-production. And again, all of those that we'll be doing this week, it'll take us a little time to get those done, so they're not going to be showing up immediately because there is some post-production that we have to do on those as well. So this is a great source, not only for concerts that are out there, but our school board meeting as well. Back to that bound calendar, our winter sports seasons are in full swing. They some started last week, but this is the first full week of games and matches. We have boys and girls basketball, wrestling, bowling, esports, and just about everything under the sun that you can find. Wednesday of this week, we will have eight college volleyball teams who are here from various colleges in the NSIC, and they are competing for their championship at the Division II level. And they are coming into our schools, into eight of our buildings, to do community service projects with our students. Sometimes that might mean they're reading with students. They're actually going to be helping put together some family kits for our Winter Solstice event that is coming up this Friday. So I wanted to draw that out. We have our Gold Card event at Jefferson High School. This is our holiday where, event where we invite people 60 and over to come and hear from Dr. Knoll and find out what's going on in the district, as well as enjoy some of our holiday concerts and music selections that will be performed. 'Tis the season also for winter plays, so hang on. Lincoln High School is performing Our Town this week, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Jefferson High School is, I'm sorry, Our Town is Thursday and Friday, I believe. Jefferson High School is doing Pinocchio Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Also, as I mentioned, Friday night, December 12th, is the Winter Solstice event put on by our Indian education folks. That's being held at Axtow Park, and word has it, that is one of Dr. Knoll's very favorite events of the year. So he will be there. What's that?
Not the potato dance.
Oh, not the potato dance. Well, maybe we'll get video of that this year. So anyone who is still interested in perhaps supporting families at the Winter Solstice event, they're still looking for some donations of peanut-free candy for the treat bags, and they could also use some additional help with cleanup after that event. Also, on Saturday, is the 20th Annual Project Warm-Up. That is the biggest police-making party, I don't know, we're going to say, in the upper Midwest. I can't believe there'd be another one that's bigger. That is being held at Sonia Sotomayor Elementary. Bring your scissor along with you, and you can be part of making the cold winter season a little warmer for those who are hurting, healing, or just otherwise unfortunate this season. They've made 43,000 blankets in the 20 years' time since it started, and we have a great number of requests this year, and we'd love to be able to fulfill those requests. That is 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM that day. Saturday, Lincoln High School is putting on a winter carnival, Winter Wonderland Carnival, from 1:00 to 3:00 for elementary-age students, and you can get in with a donation of an unwrapped toy. Lots of fun and games there for children and probably adults alike. On Saturday, we have our show choir preview at Roosevelt High School, the Military Ball at Washington High School, JROTC, and a partridge in a pear tree, right? Because we just have so many things going on. But the point being, not only are students showing up and participating in all of these activities, but these activities require a ton of work from our staff as well. Teachers, service coaches, their advisors to clubs and activities, supervisors for the weekend events that take place, and then let's not forget about all of the work that has to be done by our custodians to set up, tear down, scoop the sidewalks after we had a large snowfall this past week. But there's just a ton of work that goes into creating a very busy calendar in one school week, and it will be pedal-to-the-metal constantly through the end of 2025. Small little break over the holiday, and we'll be right back at it in January. So we just wanted to acknowledge all of the activities that are happening out there, and all of the additional work that goes into those activities by each and every staff member. They're a valuable member of our team, and we appreciate them greatly.
Well, certainly. And it's probably the month of December alone, there are more activities than most upper Midwest communities have going all year. And to think that kids and families are the heart and the soul behind the motivation of it is a lot to be said. Thank you, Deanne.
We all know that activities and clubs and all of those good works that our kids and our staff do really connect our community and our family to our schools, and we know that it's really great for student engagement, too, in their schools. So it is so wonderful to see the busy schedule. I know that staff will be able to take a well-deserved break when we finally do break for the holidays, and I just want to thank everybody involved who do such a good job with all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on 11/19/2025 and 11/24/2025? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. We do not have persons wishing to address the board this evening. Can I please get an approval on tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved tonight's agenda. Seeing no conflicts of interest, we will move on to line item, agenda item nine. Can I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Let's see, we've got A through F.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Dr. Knoll, it looks like we've got some reports of the superintendent. Could you please introduce those reports?
Thank you. Yes, this evening, we do have two reports, the first one being a class-size report. The class-size report truly is a focus on the elementary. We'll look a little bit at some of the other classes, the middle and high, but truly a focus on the elementary to look at those numbers of students and the allocation that we have at the elementary, and those ratios with the teacher to student in the elementary setting. And so we started this last year to make sure that we continued to track, because one of the things that our teachers talked about the most is the class size and the importance of maintaining that. And it's something our school board has advocated for and consistently held true to over the last several years with the budget process, is our class size at all levels, but specifically the elementary level. So Mr. Conrad will give us that report this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Knoll. For the class-size report, it attaches to our district prioritaries of academic success, effective use of resources, student well-being, and staff excellence. The purpose of tonight's report is to give a little feedback on the full-time equivalence for teachers and also the support staff at the elementary level. And then what does that, or how does that impact our class sizes? Those standards are laid out in the policy when we enter in budgeting. And right now, at the elementary level, it is figured out at 24.3 students to one teacher. Middle school is 24.41 to a teacher, and high school is 25.12. And you see this natural trend as students get a little older, the class sizes get a little bigger. And we'll show that this evening. With the elementary, we have 25 elementary schools. And if we look across that cross-section, we have some specialty programming schools in there. So we have the All-City Elementary Parent Volunteer. We have the Challenge Center, which is grades 2 through 5, helps to support gifted education. And Eugene Field, the A-plus Fine Arts School, their programming, that's a K-5 program. And then our Spanish immersion programming, one-way Spanish immersion and two-way Spanish immersion. And those are K-5 programs as well. There are 465 classroom teachers. Those would be the classroom teachers teaching kindergarten through 5th grade. In addition to those 465, we have some specialized teachers for band, orchestra, choir, or not choir, but music, and PE, along with library art. We'll give you a rundown on what those look like. But if we took those 465 into the current enrollment of K-5, which is around 11,000 kids, we get a 23.35 to 1 ratio. Remember, we were funded on 24.3 to 1. So how did it get a little bit smaller? We do have 11 FTE that came through Title Funds to help do class-size reduction in kinder and first grade in some classrooms. And then we've also done a little extra, or some additional class-size reduction with additional 7 FTE. That might be, you get a grade level where there's 38 students, you have the choice. Is it 38 in a class, or do we go with 19 in two classes? And so the numbers, being a math person myself, they don't always divide out where you'd like them to be. Same thing at the high school level. You might get 60 kids. Is that two sections of 30 or three of 20? And how some of those divide out. So that's where 18.25 FTE comes through and helps to reduce that class size at the elementary level. If we look at grade-level specific, this talks to that trend that as kids get a little older and move through the grades, the class sizes get a little bigger. So right now, in K, we're 20.8 to 1. So we're probably hovering, you're going to see some classes that are 18, 17, you're going to see some that are 22, 23. But the average are up on the board. Those all give us that 23.35 to 1 average. Interesting to note, the smallest student-to-teacher ratio is at Renberg, 20.4 to 1 holistically. When you look at the largest student-to-teacher ratio, they happen at two of our specialty programs, All-City Elementary and Sonia Sotomayor, One Way Spanish Immersion. And they're at 25.7 to 1. Then the next closest to that would be Laura Wilder. I guess you could say a traditional elementary at 25.2 to 1. And then the remaining 22 elementaries are somewhere below 24.8, would be the largest of the remaining 22. So 465 classrooms, let's break it down a little further. 70%, if you take the top two, have 25 or fewer students in them. So 70% of our class have 25 or fewer. And then we look at that top 3%, which are 13 classes that are 30. And actually, it's 12 classes have 30 kids and one class has 31, is how that breaks down. When we start getting to that 27, 28, 29 number, we start providing educational support professionals, ESPs, to help with that class. Depending on the grade level is how many hours of ESP support that classroom might get, and I'll show you a little bit about that here in a little bit. But let's take a look at those 13 classrooms. They are, all but two are 5th grade. So there are two 4th grade classrooms that are 30 in the two 4th grade classrooms. And these are the schools where they are located. So if you look at the first one, Annie Sullivan has two classes over 30. I believe it's two 5th grade classes. However, their overall student-to-teacher ratio is 21.9 to 1. So still below the district average of 24.3 to 1. And those administrators are making those decisions as to where those teachers are at by grade level. And you can follow the chart down. You see Laura Wilder in the middle of the pack. I did it alphabetically by school, not by the largest ratio. John Harris has three. That's maybe the interesting case. They have three that are at 30, but yet they met the average right on the number, 24.3 to 1, as sometimes math works out. But that's the breakdown of those 13 classes that are 30 students or more. Again, that is 12 have 30 and one class has 31. When we look at our two-way Spanish immersion classes, there are 12 sections of two-way Spanish immersion at Rosa Parks and 12 at Hayward in K through 5. They are a 24.1 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio. They look a little larger at the kindergarten level. And part of that is when you're in that two-way immersion program, you're in the program to start with, and as kids might move throughout the city, you're just not able to add another student in 4th grade, or 5th grade, or 3rd grade to that program, because they haven't had the continuity of the program along the way. And so that's why those numbers tend to decrease a little bit as you go from kindergarten through 5th grade. Again, this is our first year, or I should say, second year that we've had a 5th grade class, because we have our first set in 6th grade of two-way Spanish immersion, as we expanded out to George McGovern and Ben Rifele Middle School. So the largest class size is 27. So the largest class size is 27 students. We do have three interns in our two-way Spanish immersion program helping out. And then also mentioning that over enrollment ESP support when those class sizes do get bigger. And we'll, I'll give you a rundown on what those breakdowns are here. Special education class size. So in our RISE, Reaching Independence Through Structured Education, we have five RISE locations at the schools listed, JFK, Laura Wilder, Marcel LeBeau, SBA, and Terry Redlin, kind of geographically so families can get to those five locations. There are 143 students in RISE programming. If it's 18 teachers help deliver that RISE programming. And we plan on a 10 to one allocation, and right now, we're 7.9 to one in that RISE programming. And inside RISE programming, each teacher or each classroom has two ESPs that help support in that classroom. And then at continuation, there's, there's more teachers that make up and deliver that elementary program. This is where we're talking about art, band, EL teachers, our special education resource teachers. So EL and special education resource, they might operate in a push-in model where the teacher comes into the classroom and helps support instruction in the classroom through push-in. Or it might be a pull-out model where they're working with a small group of students, pulling them out on a specific skill that they're working to develop. So it could be push-in or pull-out, similar for both EL and special education programming. And then we have our librarians, music teachers, reading support teachers. And then we have the Sonia Sotomayor English teachers. There's two teachers that help support that Spanish, the one-way Spanish immersion programming as those kids work through their grade system. If we look at continuing to support that elementary model, we have counselors and instructional coaches. The instructional coaches, we have some general classrooms, instructional coaches, then we have reading-specific literacy instructional coaches, school psychologists, speech-language pathologists, and success coordinators to help support and round out that model. Instructional coaches are typically veteran teachers that are going to help work with our first and second-year teachers, helping to mentor, coach, get in there, observe, identify a goal, observe, and help provide feedback on the way. An additional, so in this category, with our behavior supports specialists, I included Horseman Bridges, our elementary behavior program that we have. And so when we look at our BCBA's, which are Board Certified Behavior Analysts, you might recall back to our August 25th Board Work Session, we presented a little information on that. But those top three line items, they work together. And, and typically, the BCBA's are partnered with a specialist that's a team. And so four of those pairs work in, divide out amongst the elementaries. So they work with five elementaries, a team would. There's another pair that work with RISE programming, special education. And then we have a team of two that's working to implement our district behavior structured teams where we're going into an elementary school and our BCBA's are working with the whole school, helping to establish the group norms and cultures and expectations. And the goal of this is to address the student behaviors and helping kids to re-regulate so we can get them back in the classroom where the teachers at and learning can take place for all the kids in the room. And this is where we bring up our over enrollment, over enrollment ESPs, special education resource ESPs. And the guideline we use in kindergarten, if there's the 27th student in the class, we have an ESP for six hours a day. In elementary or in kindergarten, and in grades one through three, when we hit that 27th student, we have three hours of support for that 27th student. And then that support looks a little different. If we get over 30 students, 31 students in grades one through three, now we go up to six hours a day with that ESP support. And at grades four and five, that 31st student is three hours a day of ESP support, educational support professional. We have our RISE ESPs and then Spanish immersion interns, put them on there as they support our programming as well. So 13 of those are at Sonia with Spanish immersion and three are in our two-way Spanish immersion programming. Middle school and high school would have similar funding formulas where we go off of 25.15 students to one at the high school level or 25.12, and then the middle school is 24.41. And then the difference with those is they, they incorporate the specials. So that includes the band, the orchestra, the PE teachers, they are part of that overall allocation. Whereas in elementary, we kind of pull it apart. When that classroom of first graders go to PE, they're going, that whole class is going to the PE teacher. And then that classroom teacher has another duty, might have planning period as they look through it. So staff allocations are determined through the budget process, which we're going to be entering into, starting in, in December, January, we're already thinking about next year. And the Sioux Falls School District, the Board of Education, you guys have prioritized class size when looking at those budgetary savings. And then our current student teacher ratio is just up there one more time, a little formatting piece there, but there's our current allocations. And at this time, I would ask the board to acknowledge the class size report as it's presented, and I would stand by for questions.
Okay, hold tight. Can I get a motion to acknowledge the report?
So moved.
Questions, discussion?
I just want to point out a couple of things that you talked about. They're, they seem unrelated, but they're all related. And I mean, first of all, just talking about class size, obviously, it's so important to parents. Parents always concerned about the class size and everything. But also for teachers and teacher retention, I'm sure it's hard to manage a classroom of 30 kids. And it sounds like we have ESPs in all those classrooms that, that have 30 kids or, or getting close to having 30 kids. The other two supports that I think we've heard in different avenues are so important for teacher retention are instructional coaches and the behavior employees. I mean, these are really some, those employees along with attendance liaisons are really some unsung heroes that we don't always think about and we don't always understand how it relates to teacher retention and keeping teachers happy and able to do their jobs in their classrooms. So could you just speak to that a little bit more?
Absolutely. So with our, our behavior program, the, the three components, the behavior facilitators, they're assigned to specific buildings, and they're more the boots on the ground. They're, they're interacting. So they're the ones that are getting called to the classroom to help provide support for a student. That doesn't mean they're, they're taking them out down the hallway or wherever it might be. It might. But typically, they're working to help get the student back in the classroom to address their behavior. So the behavior facilitator is implementing the plan that the Board Certified Behavior Analyst, the BCBA and the behavior specialists have created. So the facilitators are implementing that plan with the teachers and throughout the school with supportive administration. So a couple of components of that is there may be a time when the student comes out to a, a quick room. They just need a quick reset and then come back. There's another time where they need to go to a little longer piece where we can work on accomplishing some goals and then get back in the classroom. But we're, we're working to intervene in a variety of manners. That's the behavior facilitator. The behavior specialist is going to partner with the BCBA. The behavior specialist is going to have a bachelor's degree, may not be in behavior, but they're going to have a bachelor's degree, and they're partnered with a BCBA. And so the BCBA, they have the master's degree in the behavior analytics or psychology or education so that they can support the behaviors. They're the ones that are going to come in and do the functional behavior analysis. They're observing in the classroom. They're taking information down on student information to say, okay, here's the behaviors we're seeing. I'm going to go back and create this plan. They're going to partner with the specialist. Specialist is going to help some of that early coaching so that the facilitator can carry out that plan. The BCBA's are also going to partner with specialists as they develop professional development for teachers. So they might be in a school partnering with a school, and they identify a need. And now they're going to help work with administration to deliver some training on how to fulfill that need. The goal being, address the behavior, keep the kids in the classroom where the learning can occur and the support is at. But keep in mind, we're trying to address that behavior as it, as it comes through. The other piece to know, I'm referencing back to our August 25th Board Work Session, is they work in, they work in pairs, and there's four, four pairs that are assigned to elementary. So it's typically a BCBA and a specialist per five schools. And then they, they'll attend their tier-two problem-solving teams, working that because the interventions they're going to apply are tier-three. So if we think tier-one is every student has access to classroom instruction, those are all the things that happen day-to-day in a classroom. Tier-two might be that next 15% of kids saying, okay, they just need a little extra, they need, they need a specialized support or something to, to stay in that classroom to help them regulate their behaviors. And then tier-three looks the next level of intensity beyond that. So we've got four pairs across five elementaries per pair, and then we have one pair that works with our RISE programming. And then we have two BCBA's and specialists that are working with a whole school implementation program. But it's truly that partnership in different areas of expertise and how we deliver out on that behavior because it is so important to support our teachers in the classroom. The other support you mentioned was instructional coaches. And that, just that experience, and then they're primarily working to mentor first and second-year teachers, but they work with all teachers. But they'll work with, sit down and talk lesson planning. They'll talk about instructional delivery. They'll talk about a specific methodology as how you might want to deliver that. So they're going to identify that need or that goal and say, let's, let's see where we're at. Then they're going to come into the classroom and observe. Sometimes they might partner and film it, which is sometimes scary, getting filmed. But, but just like we do in athletics, we're going to sit down together and break down the film and say, hey, what were the kids doing? What was the teacher doing? Where's an opportunity for growth so that we can meet our end goal? And so that's how that partnership works. And, and then the other partnership they have is with the building administrators and delivering that professional development during the in-service days and maybe during faculty meetings and how we can continually grow as an educator.
Oh, sure. I just want to give a quick reflection for me personally going through the budget process last year. So this is very timely for us as we're stepping into that again. But I remember sitting there and my stomach was in knots because the easy thing to do would have been to raise the class sizes. And then we wouldn't have had to cut things, maneuver money. That would have been a quick fix to how tough the budget process was last year. And I remember sitting with that, and, and I know, just talking to my colleagues, that was just a non-negotiable for us. And what I've really enjoyed about being on the board is the opportunity to visit the classrooms because we're not naive to think that even with the smaller class sizes, that it's still quote-unquote easy. So I'm just really grateful that we, we've stuck to this, and I'm glad it's mentioned in there that we prioritize this because moving forward, it's obviously going to be another conversation this year on the budget. So just again, very grateful that we have the opportunity to visit and talk with teachers and all staff and let them know that we want to hear from you and how we can be more proactive. But it isn't easy. And budget process isn't for the faint of heart, but I'm glad we get this data and again, very timely report. So thank you.
Thank you, Don Marie. To follow up with that, because we have prioritized class size, it's encouraging to hear that building principals have some flexibility based on what each classroom needs are to make some important decisions. So I have a two-part question for you. The first one is that we've heard that the larger classes do in fact get the ESPs. Is there a preference with the teachers between a larger class and ESP or smaller classes nor ESP? That's my first question. My second one is given teacher retention, as Elizabeth has alluded to, and the budget constraints, as Don Marie has alluded to, how do we prioritize between the coaches, the behavior interventionists, the ESPs? You know, do we have a survey that goes out to the teachers just so the end of the day, when we are shaping the budget, that as a board, we have some data to go off of in how we're prioritizing this, especially given the budget constraints? So big question, I, I know, two.
I think, I think I've got it. So the first one, preference, I think a teacher would prefer a smaller class size over the additional ESP support. And I think a teacher would always say that no two classes are built the same. 24 kids at one class may feel like 35, and 27 kids at one class may feel like 18 some years. It just, that classroom complexion looks different, but the preference would be not to have the ESP and have just a smaller class size. I think that's fair to say. The second answer, or the second question that you asked is about, how do you, how do you compare all these things and say, the supports we provide, how do you choose between supports if it comes down to that in a budget practice?
How do we prioritize?
Yeah. So Dr. Knold had hosted some listening sessions this fall with teachers at the elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school level. So we're in the process of collecting that feedback as we speak. And, and I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to that, Dr. Knold or not, but we're still analyzing that data so that we can share that with the budget groups and pieces like that to help make those informed decisions.
Yeah. And it was great listening sessions we had, and, and Mr. Eckert was in there as well and, and went through that with the SFBA process. 120 teachers were invited to come in and, and go through a process of looking at and prioritizing some of the things that are the most important to them in a classroom. And we'll have some of that information coming up, especially as we go through the budget preparation and that process. But obviously, class size is one of those things that came up. They came up with some other innovative ideas of, of ways that we could potentially save some dollars. Another area that they, they put very highly on the list of things to protect was other individuals that come in and help in the classroom, like our, our behavior support programming. And even through the budgetary process of this last year where we reduced $3 million from the budget, we still protected class size. We also increased the number of individuals helping in the classrooms with the behavior process and our ESPs and, and continued to make sure that we protected those areas. But we did want to have those listening sessions to make sure that is what their focus was, that they assessed it in the same way we did, that their, their primary focus would be to protect that classroom, class size, the teacher, continue to maintain those behavior supports, continue the ESPs with that support. And then to look at other areas that we could look at, whether that be curriculum studies, whether it be other items that we use in our district. And we'll talk about that with our, our budget preparers to make sure that they know that information and share that with the board as well.
Well, we will keep that feedback in mind, that number one, smaller classes with no ESP would be the preference. And we'll stay tuned to learn more information on the, the survey and some of the budget reports coming back in terms of if we're looking at that teacher retention, how to prioritize those supports broadly.
Yes.
How they get prioritized and let that help to inform us as we deal with budget constraints.
And I would also add the piece with the ESPs. It's not the teachers don't appreciate the work, they would just, would rather have a smaller class size.
Understood completely. I mean, they're all appreciated. It's all important.
Well, my question just got stolen, which proves that we don't plan this out ahead of time. So, but I will just say, in our ability to visit classrooms, I'm always amazed at how adept our staff is at handling all of, all of the personalities. It doesn't matter what grade level, whether you're dealing with a junior-level class or third graders. I'm always amazed at that. But I will have to give one shout out to the staff that I think deserves the Golden Halo Awards. They're the angels on earth, and that's our kindergarten folks. I mean, they are miracle workers every day, and I don't know how they handle 24.3 bodies, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, until they get to the golden 30. This high school brain wouldn't know what to do with them, and it would scare me to death to be in that classroom. So thank you very much.
Gail, I would call that similar goals. No stealing. Oh, thank you. Any other thoughts?
I think my, involving the teachers in the process is huge because they're the ones that got to implement it. They're the ones that have to do the thing. And a lot of times, things come from the top and are just sent to the bottom. But this way, everybody can be involved, and I think that's another way to retain. So nice work.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing there's no more discussion, can, all in favor of acknowledging the class size report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have acknowledged the class size report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Dr. Knold, do we have another report?
I think Mr. Eckert has donuts next week. Yes, we do have a second report coming up here. The second report.
Put in that, too.
The second, my apologies. The second report we have is on our CLC, our Community Learning Centers. And this could be a good news report as well as so many of the other things that we bring forward and present. But Mr. Kaiser will go through and give us an update on the work that our, our Community Learning Centers. I will also say that I will also say that this program, as I've gotten to know it more and more over the last several months and even prior to that, is an incredible gift to our community to be able to help and support our, our parents in that after-school programming, other days that we don't have school and just some of the activities and functions those kids are able to be part of. Plus, it helps them immensely with the academics. And we started to see a lot of the academic returns on that investment as well. So Mr. Kaiser will go through and give us an update on that.
Thank you, Dr. Nold. And thank you for this opportunity. The purpose of my presentation is to highlight the areas of CLC program growth, quality, and sustainability. The CLC is in the third year of the elementary program and is in the first year launch of our middle school. Starting with the elementary, the after-school program expanded from 22 to 23 elementary schools this last year with the opening of Marcelo LeBeau. Enrollment has fluctuated a little bit, but particip-, at the start of the school year, but participation is stabilizing and is trending towards where we were previous with our enrollment numbers. In purple, our month over month enrollment numbers for 25, 26, what you will see is that continuing to grow towards our previous enrollment numbers. And not listed on this graph is, we just closed out in November and we just finished just shy of 1,750 students. So continuing to grow back towards that previous where I think we achieved last year about 1,800 students. Each year, and I'm going to highlight the enrollment process as an area that we are continuing to learn. As the enrollment process starts in January prior to our summer and our school year. And at that time, we typically fill up very quickly with our enrollment numbers and where our projected enrollment numbers. And when, as we go into the summer and the school year, we typically get pretty close with our being relatively full and at some of our schools have, have a waitlist. Now, we historically have seen a little bit of a dip as we get into August. And so we, as a CLC, are looking at our operations and our strategy, particularly with enrollment changes and some of our staffing as well and how we can maybe be able to serve more students right away at that beginning of that school year instead of experiencing that, that little bit of that dip. For before-school programming, we expanded from one school to eight schools this last year. And historically, we only have been at Pettigrew Elementary. This year, the CLC started serving about 230 students. And we have learned a lot over these last three months as we continue to see a little bit of a dip in this, in our enrollment trend here as we were not really sure how this would, this would all, what would all happen with enrollment at the before-school. Our data told us that before-school was a need and maybe we're not seeing that with our, some of our enrollment data. But we are really working hard to determine what is, what schools need and what schools do not need some of this before-school care. One area that we continue to monitor is students who we are serving who fall at 200% poverty or below. In 24, 25, the CLC saw another increase, another jump of about 200 students that we were serving that, that, that federal poverty level. We anticipate this trend continuing to grow and we are monitoring our scholarships to be able to, hopefully be able to continue to serve these students. As we look and we forecast our scholarships through summer of 2026, we are already anticipating of our budgeted 1.6 million. We are anticipating that we're already at about a 1.3, in which we are significantly ahead from where we were a year ago. And when we look at, for some of the reasons why, it's federal funding for the 21st century has remained flat and we did not receive some of those funds that we'd received a year ago, which is probably one of the main causes why we are anticipating that going through our scholarships a little bit quicker. Proactively, we have sought out our funds through our access for all and our community support funds, but we really do need to continue to look at a long-term sustainability plan for the CLC with some of those scholarships. Highlighting our student opportunities through enhancements, the CLC has 70-plus community partners who come in and provide students with athletics, arts, STEM, life skills, workforce development, and workforce readiness. These enhancements are a value add to our students and service, and services are not paid for through parent tuition. We receive grants and just really partnerships for, with those programs where they really want to just come in and serve those students and families and provide them high-quality enrichment experiences. So we are incredibly grateful to our continued support and growing support of the students after-school. We know that more hours of enrichment equal better outcomes. And despite that slight decrease in enrollment at the start here, we are continuing to see that our student engagement and our average daily attendance continues to increase. And not shown here as well is our average daily attendance reaching over 1,470 students, which be, would be about our highest average daily attendance. And that was in November. One program I want to highlight here is, comes from our Summer Olympics in July of 2025. We had the opportunity through a partnership with Sanford Sports to, to bus all thousand kids out to the Sanford Sports Complex and for a full day of athletics recreation and just celebration. And it was really accomplished through community partnership and volunteerism. We had a lot of supports from community programs, athletic programs, colleges, all coming together and serving the kids. It was a special day filled with a lot of smiles. Looking at our middle school launch, we added CLC sites at Whittier, Ben Rifele, and then obviously George McGovern had its big groundbreaking. And over the first four months, we continue to see a lot of growth. We started in August with about 130 students and we, in November here, we enrolled 550. Average daily attendance continues to grow as well, where we are serving about 135 kids on a daily basis between those three schools. And very similar to the elementary program, we have worked hard to expand those community enrichment opportunities, CLC activities, and homework help for those middle schoolers. And we believe that that was, that excitement contributed to the rapid growth and we are excited for the continued opportunities that we'll be able to provide those middle school When you look at the expansion, we are in the tier-two pilot stage here this year with the goal of being able to expand to all, all of our middle schools with that tier-three model. That tier-three model is, comes with extended hours of, to 8:00 PM versus the 6:00 PM, a connection coordinator at each school, and then evening, evening meals. The goal is to expand to those schools down below in, highlighted in yellow, with this tier, with this tier-three model in August of 26, knowing that funding sources for this expansion comes from private donations, United Way grants, and a very small portion of parent fees based on free and reduced lunch status. Expansion obviously is based on securing and sustaining those, those funds. I know that we will be able to expand to one more with some of the funding that we have received, but we're waiting to see on some of those remaining. This graph highlights the Boys and Girls Club ribbon cutting and the goal of where we'd like to bring Whittier Middle School at, at some point, but this was a very special day for students, families, our district, and our community, having this middle school space where students can have access to a program till 8:00 PM, full programming in the summer, extended care days, and they are able to receive a meal right there at the Boys and Girls Club. Looking at family and community engagement, health and wellness fairs, that has been a proven success since the exception of the, of the CLC. And the purpose of these are really to connect families to resources, health screenings and wellness education, and strengthen our family and community ties. Our upcoming events for this year will be at February, on February 9th at JFK, March 2nd at Laura Wilder, and March 10th at Whittier. And this year, we've been working with those schools to really piggyback off of events that they already have established and see if we can continue to grow those, grow the turnout further. And lastly, I was going to highlight the, the role of the connection coordinators. And this connection coordinator position has been the core of what the CLC has. And this program, this, this position works half in the school day, half out of school, works to provide academic and behavioral support during the school day, support the after-school, and then put on family engagement and outreach opportunities like this at those different schools. In summary, the CLC continues to grow and evolve, adding value to kids and families of the, of Sioux Falls. We continue to look at where we are, the biggest value add to our before-school, after-school, and summer enrichment programming. And our goal here is to continue to expand the middle school programming this, this coming year. So all this made possible a strong collaboration, which is the foundation to our success in supporting the whole child, strengthening families and stewarding resources. And I'd welcome any questions.
Second. Okay. Standby for questions. Could you go back to that last slide? I have just a point of clarification. Is that Einstein or was that Doc from Back of the Future?
I'm not sure. Either way, it was a big hit.
Probably Einstein with the numbers. Anybody?
The brutality of it was, it made every single one of them solve a math problem before they could get their candy. So.
That's so mean.
Yeah. They did pretty well.
Thank you, Einstein.
Oh, I did have a question. I just want to say I'm a huge fan of CLC. Love it so much and I'm so glad to see it expanding. And I know you haven't gotten a, a ton of enrollment with the before-school at the elementaries, but I'm curious about before-school at middle school, just because it starts later. And I feel like a lot of parents have a need or have a gap where they're like, what do I do with this kid? And I, you know, if you drive by a middle school at 8 o'clock in the morning, there's always kids just roaming around. So I'm curious if there have been conversations about that.
There has been brief conversations. A couple of middle schools have brought that, middle school principals have brought that to my attention too, for further resource, research, but they feel that a huge value add could be before-school versus even after-school.
Don Marie?
Oh, quick question. Is there busing provided for the before-school?
There's not at this time, no.
Do you think that's maybe why there's a little bit of a hindrance of the numbers?
Very, very well could be. And when you look at a lot of the, the before-school programs that are seen sustained, consistent, higher enrollment, they're on the perimeters of Sioux Falls. So still need to do a little bit more research on that, but that very well could be.
Yeah, just given a lot of them are that poverty rate, the chances of them having some sort of transportation. They probably rely on busing to get to school. So to get to before-school stuff is probably challenging for most families. Thing to grow in, but everything else, again, same echoing, big CLC fan. I know Rebecca gave a really stellar report showcasing how it was that 92% of kids who attend so many days of after-school improve their math score. And I mean, just the data is there. So to see this and continuing to champion this is one of the things I'm very proud to do. So thank you for this report.
Thank you.
Gail.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. So today at the Sioux Falls Retired School Personnel Gathering, I always give a little school board preview of what's going to be on our agenda. And so I gave them a little bit of a snippet of the 70 community partners, the 23 elementary schools that were in, the three middle schools with two other ones coming online next year, and they were absolutely blown away. These are all Sioux Falls retirees that, no matter the job title, they, a lot of them spent their career here. And they were very, very complimentary and very excited because they all understand the connection between giving kids a positive place to be after school and as you were speaking to student achievement. So shout out to you, Mr. Kaiser, and all of your staff.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Go.
So when we talk about attendance, and then we've discussed it before, so the CLC is actually helping with their overall school attendance, we think, correct?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Well, attendance at CLC is helping our attendance in everyday classroom.
I, I would, yes. Sorry, as far as our attendance, so the students that, from the data that we have been seeing, the students that are part of the CLC, yes, they're seeing, year over year, are seeing improvements in their attendance.
So I thought, that's, that's great stuff.
Yeah. Seeing a very significant in, validated improvement in attendance and the academics both, and, and really seeing that with those kids that are part of and attending at the CLC programming. And I love the tutoring and I know there's been some dollars and things that have maybe been able to come in to help sustain that with the tutoring process at the CLC programming as well, especially for that middle school. So excellent, thanks.
Yeah. Great. There's working parents that have, their hours are early and opening up some possibility for before-school care. I know is addressing some real needs and it's encouraging that you're looking to where else those might be. My next question was, beyond the federal dollars, I know there's been some gap. It sounds like we do have some community partners coming forward. If there are people interested, do they look to the Community Foundation to be a donor or to be a partner? Or do they go through the Education Foundation? What's the best way to engage and to help provide additional scholarships beyond what you currently have?
Yeah. So our access for all fund is through the Community Foundation and, but contacting Rebecca, I, through the, and the Community Foundation, we could definitely steer it in the right direction, so.
Yeah. Given it's December, it's a great time to be engaged with the Community Foundation and, and donors that may not yet know about our mission. So for anybody listening, if they have interest, they'll go through the Community Foundation and call it the Community Learning Centers, Sioux Falls School District, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Good. Very good. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of acknowledging the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved the Community Learning Center report. Acknowledge the report. Thank you. Very good. Okay, we're done with our reports. The superintendent will introduce Mr. Veek. He's got a report on the election timeline. That would be the Sioux Falls School Board election timeline.
Thank you. Yes, last legislative session, there was a law change to require local regular elections to either be held on primary day or general election day. So we've got ours proposal today to set our election for primary day in June. So you have in your materials a resolution to hold the 2026 regular election on June 2nd. The election will be held in conjunction with Minnehawken and Lincoln County primary elections, since we're in both counties. The election will have three vacancies, one of the terms of Mark Murin, Don Marie Johnson, and Gail Swanson expire. That's a first, where we had three up, but we've gone to even your elections for that. Your materials also contain a timeline with key dates for the election, and I'll just briefly touch on some of those. So the nominating, this has changed because of this, this law changed, it's quite a bit different. It's quite a bit different. Nominating petitions may be circulated beginning February 2nd. And the last day to file a petition is March 24th. The last day of absentee balloting begins April 17th. The deadline for voter registration is May 18th. The last day of in-person voting absentee is June 1st. And then the election will be held on June 2nd. We, the board will canvass the election results on June 22nd, and the new member or members will begin their term on July 7th at our annual meeting. So, with that, I just ask that you approve the resolution designating June 2nd, 2026 as election day.
Okay, can I please get a motion to acknowledge the resolution of June 2nd being the date of election for Sioux Falls School Board members? So.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Todd, for those that are listening or in the audience that may have interest to learn more about running, who should they turn to for questions?
Yeah, our local expert is Shelley Connolly. They can call down here. Her number is 367-7905, and she'll have packets available for them as they get to that date where they can start nominating, start passing their petitions, which is February 2nd.
That's coming right up. Will we also have the information on the website?
Oh, yeah. We do have an election spot on there that will start filling in all this information now on the website.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have acknowledged the resolution, or approved the resolution to the June 2nd election day. All right, Brett, we have some policies and regulations.
Yes, thank you, President Kelly. We got a bunch of them tonight, two different groups. So, we're bringing these two groups of policies on behalf of the Policy Review Committee. This is just in furtherance of our continual review and revision of our district policies and regulations. So, the first set includes 11 policies up on a second reading tonight. These policies had their first reading on October 27th board meeting, so I won't go through the changes again, as the district did not receive any comments from the public on these policies. So, with that, unless the board has any questions regarding that packet of 11 policies, I'd ask for approval of the policies and their accompanying regulations.
Thank you again, just for clarification, there were no changes.
These ones are up on a second reading.
But from the second reading to tonight.
Correct, from the first reading. No changes, no comments.
Thank you. Can I please get a motion to approve the review revised policies and regulations for the second reading? Some, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved the second reading of the 11 review revised policies.
Thank you. I also have 10 additional policies up on a review revise, as each of these have either no changes or very minimal changes. Those policies are AC, equal opportunity, non-discrimination. There's no changes to that policy. Again, these are just reviewed by the Policy Review Committee, just to make sure they're up to date as a part of our continual review. Second policy, DA, fiscal management goals, there were no changes recommended there. DB, annual budget, again, no changes. DBC, budget planning, had no changes recommended. DBJ, budget transfers, had a change to the dollar amount to match the state law for moving funds between budget line items. Policy DCA, taxing and borrowing, no changes recommended to that. DEC, funds from federal tax sources, no changes. DFA, investing, no changes recommended. IHBF, general education homebound, there's just some minor reference changes to staff position, and then a small grammatical fix. And then finally, LBC and its accompanying regulation, relations with non-public schools, there are no changes recommended. So, unless the board has questions regarding these 10 policies and their regulations, I'd ask for approval of the 10 policies on a review revise.
Okay, hold tight. Can I get a motion to approve the 10 items on the review revise policy and regs? Some, second. Any discussion?
Just as a reminder, Gail and I sit on the Policy Review Committee, and we did discuss this at the work session, and we were both comfortable with the very minor revisions.
Yeah? Okay, we were indeed, thank you. Thank you for your work on that and bringing them to the work session and then being able to see them tonight. Any other discussion, thoughts? Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved the review revised policies, the 11 items, or excuse me, 10 items this evening. Thank you. Okay, can I please get a motion? We are going to go into our executive session.
I would move to recess, excuse me, recess until 6:40 PM. At that time, we'll resume general meeting and then go immediately into executive session.
Okay, that gives you about five minutes, so great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we will go into executive session in five minutes.